I know we're family.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome everybody to the April 25 Campbell County School Board Meeting. I'm gonna, sorry. Can you hear me now? We will start with Pledge of Allegiance and followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a presentation, Dr. Johnson.
Ms. Jeremy, each month the Technology Department has been doing a teacher feature. And anyway, I didn't know that it, how many of you were looking at those, but we wanted to just start tonight and just share one of the large one with you. Let you take a look at that.
I'm Susan Stevenson, I teach at Alta Vista Combined School. I teach Theater, English 10, Creative 10, and AP 11. The project that we're looking at today, I did with my AP 11 students. The goal of this project was for students to apply the principles of rhetorical analysis to a piece of art rather than a text. They created videos in the search three main purposes. It allows the students to show mastery of analysis skills in a way that's more unconventional than typical essay writing. It asks students to think critically to decide the most effective way to organize and present information outside of traditional essay. And it gives students an opportunity to see how analysis skills are going to translate into the real world. These skills will carry over to online literacy and digital citizenship. Creating a video rather than writing an essay forced students to organize and communicate in a different way. When they write, they only have to consider the organization and flow of words on a page. For the video, they had to also consider images, timing, rhythm, speech, tone, and overall flow.
It was fun to use a different medium to work with. Instead of just having a regular essay with this, you get a little more creativity.
Creating a video instead of writing an essay also made the assignment less overwhelming. They still showed me the depth of knowledge, maybe even more, but they did it without the added stress of taking a page limit.
If I were to write it in essay format, it probably would have taken me less time, but I wouldn't have worked as much about the piece.
The biggest barrier we had was just students figuring out how to use the technology. The way that we overcame that was going through class time and giving students opportunity to help others. I feel like the lesson was a success. The students really enjoyed the process of selecting a piece of art and researching the artist. Giving them the opportunity to show me what they know without the formal constraints of an essay allowed them to be more creative and expressive. So, for some students, I think the quality of analysis and depth of thinking is higher than what I've been getting on paper. This assignment hit three of the five keys: critical thinking, creative thinking, and communication.
On this project, I felt like it was great. It was an opportunity for us to put our creativity into something productive in a different way. Instead of writing an essay, we got to kind of do our own thing and still make something come together that we really couldn't do. And in words, you can get a lot, but with being able to speak, being able to put pictures, videos together, and really have a visual representation for your audience to see is great, it's great. And for her to give us this opportunity, I felt like this opened the door, not only for school, but to give us a chance to see how editing videos is, and maybe if we like it, we can take it into something different. So, I love it.
That's great.
That's great. Good job, Albus.
Okay. Adders from the floor. We have several speakers tonight. I would ask you to respect the three-minute limit and so the audience should be respectful. Our first speaker is Liz Nordquist. Yes, please.
So I'm Liz Nordquist. I'm the current coach for the Alta Vista Swim Team, and I'm here to bring up the matter of trying to get funding for a secondary coach, whether that be considered a JV coach or an assistant coach for the swim team. Currently in the county, there are three schools that have a high school swim team, two of which I know only have one coach for sure. Our team this year, we expanded to both a JV and a varsity team, which put us at forty swimmers. Thirty of those were varsity swimmers. And the past years, our numbers have gone sixteen, twenty-three, and twenty-seven. So we are showing a gradual increase in the number of people who are swimming. And having this many athletes with only one coach on the pool deck creates kind of an unsafe environment because they're not on land, they're not running, they're in the water, they're swimming. There's more danger and inherent risk involved. And so we are trying to just have another coach to have a second set of eyes that's not just me and a lifeguard on them, as well as being able to put all of the swimmers into the events to go to the swim meets. That takes up a considerable amount of time and requires strategy, making sure they're in the same events, meets, and things like that. So having another coach would definitely help cut back on that time and how many swimmers possibly missed an event or didn't swim something they wanted to because they told me on the pool deck and I wasn't able to write that information down. The next thing is we share locker rooms at the YMCA because we have to swim there. It's the only pool in Alta Vista. And the way that the timing works out, they coincide with some of the YMCA practices. And with only one coach, I can't monitor those locker rooms. And now you have high schoolers and possibly elementary schools in a locker room at the same time. So having a second coach would give us the ability to monitor and make sure that there is a safe environment for all of the kids that are at that YMCA. When we go to meets, we are on a bus, and we only take the varsity kids, but that's still putting me with thirty swimmers on one bus. There's no way that I can properly monitor thirty swimmers on the bus, even if I sit in the middle of the bus, you still have those seats, and I just can't see everything. As well as every meet has a coaches meeting, as a single coach, I am leaving thirty swimmers by themselves on a pool deck with no monitoring outside of my captains to go to these meetings that I have to be at for every swim meet that we go to. The other one that I want to bring up is communication. Being a single coach by myself, there are things I know I need to get out and get communicated, but if I run over late talking to a student or this or that, it may slip my mind to go back and send that email out to those parents and just trying to make sure that I get that communication to them so they know their students are in a well, safe, organized environment. And one of the other things I did want to mention is that I did talk to the school about this, and the school told me to bring it to the board. So I had already gone to them and asked for assistance before coming to you guys.
Hey Liz. Would you introduce Mr. Schultz and tell everybody what he accomplished his senior year?
I sure will. So over here, we have Chris Schultz. Stand up, Chris. For any of y'all who don't know, he is the reason we have a swim team at Alta Vista. He was the one who started this. And this year, with his high school swimming, he was the state champion in the 500 free. And well, from what I heard last year swimming, him and the other swimmer were neck and neck the entire 500. This year, he was in front of this guy the entire time, did not give it up. And so that just speaks volumes to him as a swimmer. He also, outside of high school swimming, went to Y Nationals in three events. So he got to go and experience that as well for swimming. So, thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Reggie Herndon.
Reginald Herndon, 6698 Wars Road, Rustburg. Good evening. I come before you tonight as the president of the Campbell County branch of the NAACP. By their status, I am speaking for our members and for all people who agree with the NAACP's mission of ensuring the political, educational, social, and economic equality of all persons and to eliminate racial hatred and racial discrimination. I stated in my last address that we are greatly concerned about the school board adopting a resolution against inherently divisive concepts in schools, including critical race theory. As elected representatives, resolutions you adopt are viewed as the opinion of the people you represent. People of color are not the majority, but our interests deserve equal consideration along with everyone else's when this board is considering any action. These reasons are why the Campbell County NAACP initiated a letter campaign against this resolution for citizens to make their personal disagreement known to this board and why I am here to express fervent disagreement on behalf of the people whom I represent. What is divisive is in the eye of the beholder. History teaches us that we should be cautious when attempting to set into law or policy what is divisive. It was not long ago when it was divisive for little black children to go to school with little white children, drink from the same water fountain, or swim in the same pool. Many people living in this county still remember colored only or white only signs, and from other like experiences. This proposal has invoked old memories of their own unequal treatment. So the Campbell County NAACP questions the necessity or gain to behead by adopting any resolution against so-called inherently divisive concepts. We do not think that the majority of the people of color would be reassured by this resolution. I would have you revisit your intentions and reflect on who needs reassuring. Also, we would hope that this resolution is not a response to the similar resolution passed by the Campbell County Board Supervisors in January, which stated the supervisor's opinion of what the schools should and should not do. I remind this board that the citizens elected you, and by that, you do not answer to the board of supervisors. We're not here to debate the merits of critical race theory or the 1619 Project, as to whether either is appropriate to be taught in public schools. We leave that to the experts who conduct research for and design instructional curriculum. It is undeniable that America has a controversial history and that everyone's lived experience has not been the same throughout its history. We say teach the truth because that is how we'll move forward together. Furthermore, we trust that you would give rank-and-file teachers the instructional bandwidth and protection to teach the truth and fulfill their noble calling. We as the NAACP are looking after the interests of our children of color, and we urge you to take the non-controversial path of not moving forward with this resolution. I thank you for your time.
Rebecca Shepherd.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Shepherd. I live on 974 Dotson Drive in Rustburg, and I love living here in Campbell County. I've been a public school teacher, I'm a mom of four kids, and I've been a taxpayer here since 2011. I realize that in our county, we may, the transgender issue may not be quite as prevalent as what you might see like in Northern Virginia or some other areas. And I realize that our county's been able to navigate some things, whether it's bathrooms or other things. But I also know that when I go to the Campbell County website and I click on, a few clicks on the, through the Campbell County website, that I get to a place where it tells me that to decrease bullying, that I should cater to pronouns and the student's desired name. What I'd like to do right now is just paint for you a little picture of just the end of that road. I have spent quite a bit of time with representation from the trans community here locally, and I found this book that after speaking with two school board members last year, I was just really concerned that we just didn't really have research, that they're just, the research wasn't really happening. And I just really feel it's important, knowing what's coming from Richmond with the policies, that we really need to be prepared in our research. So this book is called Irreversible Damage, and I just encourage every single parent, every single school board member to read it. It's not a conservative religious book. This person doesn't have my religion, they don't have my worldview, but I will tell you, their research on the transgender movement is incredible. She interviews people from the left, people from the right. And so, just to paint for you in one minute and sixteen seconds, what that end of the road, so I've been a band director, and I love working with students, but if Joe wants me to call him Josephine and to switch to pronouns, I just want to paint for you what that end of the road is, or we can switch it and say Josephine to Joe, since this book actually focuses on girls. If Josephine wants to be called Joe and those pronouns are switched, the end of that road, actually let me back up a bit, I realize it's always been gender dysphoria. It's a mental health issue, but the current transgenderism, it's not the same as the old gender dysphoria. There's two things that cause it. One, it's peer-based, so you'll see a group of girls that all decide that they need to become trans. Or it's also based from YouTube influencers who disciple these kids step by step. They say, okay, you can get your breast binders here without your parents knowing because there won't be a return address. And this is the words you need to use when you need to force your parents into, guilt them into letting you have testosterone. This is what you need to do. So they go through step by step. The end of the road is that by the time, they don't call it body mutilation, they call it top surgery, okay? They don't call it, so the end of the road is infertility, sexual dysfunction, heart issues, cancer issues, that's the end of the road. And please read this book, please. And I just encourage all of you, thank you so much for your time.
Did you all get one of these in your email?
Yep.
I also have more copies for anyone who's interested.
All right, Mr. Gifford.
Hello, I'm David Gifford, 285 Beasley Road. Once again, I want to thank you for taking a stand for parents' rights. I want to tell you today, I actually agree with this man in some ways. I don't think that critical race theory should be put away because it is inherently divisive issue. There are a lot of inherently divisive issues in our world, and sometimes people have to be exposed to them. I can't imagine that we would take all inherently divisive issues away from 11th and 12th graders. I just can't imagine it. We have another standard in our world, it's called truth. Let's choose if it's true or if it's not true. You know, we have this thing called the theory of evolution, and the theory of critical race theory. These are theories, and these are ideas that people believe in kind of like a religion. Do you believe in evolution? No, I don't believe in evolution. Do you believe in critical race theory? These things are like a religion. And so there have been people who have not wanted our schools and things to have religion in, religion in, and there are people who've been working since 1905 to get religion out of public square. But I think as far as critical race theory, I think the board should vote against it because it is not true, and because it is a type of religion. And there's also, if we're going to think about religions, I would think that we should think that more helpful to bring race together would be what Jesus said. He said, "You have heard that it was said, 'You shall love your neighbor and hate your enemy,' but I say to you, 'Love your enemies and pray for those who persecute you, that you may prove yourselves to be sons of your father who is in heaven, for he causes his son to rise on the evil and the good, and sends his rain on the righteous and the unrighteous. For if you love those who love you, what reward do you have? Even the tax collectors, do they not do the same? And if you greet only your brothers and sisters, what more are you doing in others? Even the Gentiles do the same. Therefore you shall be perfect, as your heavenly Father is perfect.'" We need to cultivate a world of tolerance. Cultivate a world of tolerance. And I know little children shouldn't be exposed to certain things, and I'm not against creation, I'm not against critical race theory because it's inherently divisive. I'm against it because it's false.
Jackie Mendez.
Well, good evening on this beautiful sunny evening. My name is Jacqueline Mendez. I'm a resident of Campbell County and a Moms for Liberty member. So the Campbell County Board has presented a resolution condemning inherently divisive concepts. Although it's a good start, there is much needed to clarify the implementation of such initiative. This board needs to create a policy that prohibits the use of divisive concepts throughout the K-12 curriculum. A resolution does not guarantee anything. What steps are you taking to guarantee the resolution to become Campbell County school policy? We need bold leadership, righteous persons standing up to represent the community you serve. Are you negating your responsibilities and oath of the office you took when being sworn as a board member? So we have recognized and understand the language being used. Are we not on the same team? The shock here is these abhorrent instructional materials and framework are rooted in cultural Marxism. We supposedly live in a constitutional republic where citizens are able to speak publicly to seek understanding while looking to solutions. I am skeptical because my parents left Cuba. Their life changed dramatically. Communism has failed in every country, as you well know, and divisive concepts will not lead us to better opportunities. America is the beacon of hope, land of opportunity, where Americans who wish to pursue their dreams can regardless of race and gender, and you know this. So under the premise of diversity, equity, and inclusion, we are depriving our kids to be challenged, engaged within their community. Learning is no longer encouraged. Kids are taught to memorize and regurgitate what is presented. Thinking for oneself is no longer being encouraged, and kids are indoctrinated with the latest trends of political ideology. It's mental programming. It's important to understand how sophisticated, interconnected, and well-funded this program is, this programming is. This is a, this is a list of current social justice initiatives in education. Social emotional learning, cultural relevant pedagogy, restorative justice, courageous conversations, pride, equity, diversity, and inclusion, ethnic studies, anti-bias training, and trauma-informed teaching and learning. What am I missing under these premises? We risk denying our triumphs and travesties. My family benefited from public education. We love America. An unending gratitude for the opportunities afforded to live in freedom. Love of God and country. We will not let you destroy our children, indoctrinate, or even groom them to be social justice warriors. We want them to excel in any endeavor they choose, and parents just want you to teach. Thank you.
Robert Otero.
Good evening. My name is Robert Otero. I'm a Campbell County resident from Spring Hill District. I am speaking on behalf of the parents and the community members that support the resolution condemning inherently divisive concepts. Over the past year, our teachers have done a great job given the forced limitations they were placed under by the federal and state government. They should be applauded for their efforts. The so-called experts at the state level are now pushing teachers to be therapists, social workers, nurses, and much, much more. Yet, reading and math scores continue to decline. The responsibility of our teachers is to teach the basics: reading, writing, mathematics, and history. Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning, CASSL acronym, was established 26 years ago. CASSL, the authors of Social Emotional Learning, are asking teachers to lead group therapy sessions with their students. It is a terrible idea that should be abandoned at all levels. SEL is beginning to cause great physiological harm while crossing several ethical lines. SEL has and will continue to fail because the goal is to harness collectivism ideology with guaranteed outcomes. Guaranteed outcomes cannot be achieved in any school system, anywhere in the nation. Guaranteed outcomes is an academic pipeline, pipe dream. As elected officials, you have taken an oath to uphold the Virginia Constitution as well as the US Constitution. Social emotional learning violates all the concepts that you were sworn to uphold. The school system has a duty to ensure that young people are not exposed to inappropriate content at school, including material that a pupil could reasonably be expected to find traumatizing, given their age or developmental level. In order to maintain our trust in the school system, students must be protected from abuse of the authority over them. This includes avoiding giving the impression of delivering biased instructions with the intent of influencing them towards a teacher's preferred viewpoint. Parents want change, return to the basic principles of teaching the basics. I expect every one of you, democratically elected to the school board, to reflect local community standards. Thank you.
Brenda Pennell.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Brenda Pennell. I'm secretary for the Campbell County branch of the NAACP. I live at 73 Pilot View Road, Concord. As you know, Campbell County NAACP endorsed a letter campaign that allowed citizens to express their opposition of the resolution put forward by the board of supervisors and the school board against the teaching of inherently divisive concept. As part of this campaign to invite citizens to stand with us in opposition, there were also petitions circulated at local churches. I presented the board with these petitions by giving them to Mrs. Dobbins. There are 46 signatures representing members from several congregations. Also, there are letters included in the packet. I assure you that for people to go to this level of action, they are very concerned about where this resolution might lead to our children of color. As a 1968 graduate of a segregated school, I often think about how it was having, how it was having longer school days to accommodate students of a different skin color. I also remember the broken chalk and never knowing the smell of a new clean book until I became an adult. I do not like public speaking, I'm not fond of it, but here I am tonight. I trust that you will consider the voices of opposition and not move forward with this resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Doug Behringer.
My name is Doug Behringer. I'm a Campbell County resident, Rustburg District, and I grew up and live less than two miles from here, so this is my stomping ground. I've been thinking a lot about what to say tonight, which led me to revisit Dr. Martin Luther King's famous "I Have a Dream" speech for the first time in many years. He opens it with an honest and unflattering account of how America has had and has failed to live up to its founding principles, particularly as it pertain to our brothers and sisters of color. But he ends on a high note, celebrating the promise of the American dream as formulated in our founding documents by our imperfect founding fathers 250 years ago. Dr. King believed in the American dream, an equal opportunity for all citizens to participate in the promises of that American dream, regardless of race, creed, or gender. I truly believe that he would be standing with us today in rejecting critical race theory, not only in our schools, but in society as a whole. So what is critical race theory, and why must we reject it? I can say one thing, it is certainly not history, it is certainly not social studies. Further, it is directly opposed to all Further, it is directly opposed to all that Dr. King said in his "I Have a Dream" speech and is a direct repudiation of everything Dr. King said and did during his tragically short life. Rather than seeking to unite all Americans as one nation under God and joint heirs to the promise of the American dream, CRT seeks to divide Americans on the basis of race, rejecting the content of our character and focusing solely on the color of our skin. Rather than presenting a balanced and honest accounting of our history, as Dr. King did in his speech and elsewhere, it seeks to perpetuate the false narrative embodied in the dishonest 1619 Project itself, an evil descendant of the blame America first lies promulgated by Howard Zinn and his Marxist ilk. Indeed, CRT is a systematic and systemic packaging of one-sided lies into a body of Marxist propaganda that the far-left seeks to institutionalize into our universities and schools for the sole purpose of indoctrinating our future generations. As such, CRT is just a more specialized form of Marxist dialectic, replacing Marx's original economic conflict between capitalists and proletariat with a manufactured conflict between so-called oppressors and oppressed based solely on their racial differences. Further evidence can be seen in the founding of the BLM movement by avowed card-carrying Marxist radicals for the purpose not of advancing people of color but enslaving and destroying them. These Marxist radicals have been exposed for their corruption and greed, and we can know them not by their false words but by their fruits: looted and burned out of Democrat cities and minority businesses and a skyrocketing murder rate among our black population. The goal is always the same with Marxist dialectic: divide people, destroy democratic institutions, and replace liberty with Marxist tyranny. So I ask that you substitute the words inherently divisive, controversial concept with Marxist indoctrination. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Crystal Coman from Altavist, Virginia, and if I may, I would like to turn this way and speak to the audience and to this distinguished gentleman, Mr. Behringer.
No, you're addressing the board.
Well, I would like to address everybody. Suppose I stand over here.
They can hear you.
How's that? Thank you. Okay. I think my voice is loud enough. I think you can hear me. I retired as a teacher from Campbell County in last June, and this little silly ring was given to me, this multicolored ring was given to me by a student walking down the hallway, fifth grader in my last year there.
Ms. Coman, are you addressing the board or the others?
I'm addressing everybody here.
Please address the board.
I'm addressing everybody, Dr. Miller. This ring was given to me by a student walking down the hallway, arm in arm, both of those students, one was white, one was black. And I thought to myself, this Dr. Miller was my red line in the sand. The red line that you had said, why should Campbell County draw a red line in the sand? Well, this was mine. And that's when I thought to myself, I have to retire because I have to be able to stand here and speak my mind and not be involved in the school system per se. Dr. Mr. Herndon, with all due respect, truth, truth is what we're after here, the truth. Okay? Mr. Behringer laid it all out historically. I'm going to lay it out face to face. The African-American History Education Commission is a commission that rewrote our social studies curriculum. And it says in that recommendation that I, as a white teacher, would not be welcoming to black students in my classroom. I have graduated in 1970-something. I won't tell you the date because then I'll tell you my age. And never once did I ask, who was who walking into my room? And I resent it, and I will not teach it to any student. And that's our, is what we're talking about. Here is 1620. These are the historians, every race, color, and creed, every possible pronoun you want to think of. This is the historical fact that negates the 1619 Project. Here, sir, and your other members, red, white, and black rescuing American history from revisionists and race hustlers. This is written by Dr. Robert L. Woodson, a very well-known person in the race community. That's what we're after, sir. And to end in my last eight minutes, eight seconds, 11 pages, I presented this to Dr. Johnson first thing this morning of books that you would not want in Campbell County Blackers.
All right, that ends our matters from the floor. And so now I ask for a motion for approval of the March 14th meeting minutes.
So moved, Ms. Chairman.
Second.
Any discussion or questions about minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
They can't hear you. They haven't hear you.
That motion.
I made the motion. I made the motion.
All right. Can you hear me now? Okay, I asked for a motion for approval. I asked for a motion for approval of the January 18th Joint Board Work Session Minutes.
Motion.
Second.
If a motion and a second, any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any opposed? Thank you. Payment of the bills.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the bills? Questions? All in favor of payment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Acceptance of donations. Ms. McClanahan.
Tonight, you have 23 donations for your approval that were listed in advance of the meeting. Unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve them as presented.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of non-resident tuition. Ms. McClanahan.
Tonight, you have one applicant being considered for approval as a non-resident tuition student. They have been endorsed by the principal, and we ask that you approve them as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration or request for supplemental transfer of appropriations. Ms. McClanahan.
Tonight, you have six appropriations listed in advance of the meeting. Unless you have any specific questions, I ask that you approve them.
If there are no questions, I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of personnel report. Ms. Hunley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, you have the personnel report in front of you. Unless you have any questions, I'd ask that you approve it as written.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions from Ms. Hunley?
How many do we hire from the open house?
The job fair that we had? There were 14 that we hired from our job fair.
That's great.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of resolution condemning inherently divisive concepts.
Ms. Chairman, in your packet is the resolution that was presented last month in draft form. There have been no changes to your consideration tonight.
We have a motion.
Motion to approve.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of resolution for site easement deed. Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. With the construction of the new Rustburg Middle School and the new extension, I think, of Carden Lane behind the school that will come out on Rocky Road, the VDOC is requiring a site easement, so we would need to convey that property. And Mr. Hawkins has drawn all of that information up, but it needs a resolution that's in your packet to give me the authority to sign off on the, all the different flats making this site adjustment. So, and then he will take and have it recorded.
So it's still our property, it's just an easement?
Correct.
Okay. We can't put a sign on it?
That is correct. It's a shrub or anything that would shrug.
So it's not controversial? Is that correct?
So it's for better line of sight for traffic?
That's it.
And that's what it's intended for?
Okay. All right.
Motion.
Second.
And a second. Thank you. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Order the superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I have just a few things to report. First, I have confirmed the May 16th work session here at 6:30, where you will be updated on all the work that's being done in regards to the Brookville area Tenet Zone CIP, Capital Improvement Project. You probably did hear, I sent the link out to the supervisors' meeting last week, they did approve moving forward with a renovation at Brookville. But again, you'll get the full presentation on the 16th in regards to that and the work that would needs to be done going forward. On, I have posted the Joint Committee Minutes for your review. They do not require approval since they are committee work. This Wednesday, we are hosting State Superintendent Balo here for a visit. She reached out to us a couple of weeks ago, or several weeks ago, wanting to visit Campbell County. She will be attending. She asked that the chairman of the school board, as well as the board of supervisors, be present. Supervisor Klein could not attend, so Supervisor Shockley will be attending, and myself and Dr. Stanley. And we'll be visiting here, having a roundtable question answer, just chat, and then we'll be visiting some classrooms here, possibly Rustburg Middle, Elementary, possibly Rustburg High, depending on time. But I did want you to know we'll report back. And then lastly, I wanted to welcome back Captain Lawhorn. I think, I don't know if he's in the room or not, but there he is. Captain Lawhorn is now the first Campbell County Sheriff's Office employee or officer to ever graduate from the FBI National Academy. It's a nomination. It's quite a prestigious honor. He was nominated to attend. It's a significant, I'm going to say 10 to 12 weeks of training, so he'll be able to bring all of that information back to Campbell County and help us in our department. So welcome back and congratulations, Mike. And if you notice him walking just a little bit leaning to the left, he's got some extra weight on his left finger, so he did recently get married.
Oh, congratulations.
So, and that's all that I have.
All right, thank you very much. All right. All right, matters from the board. Why don't we start at this end? Mr. Brandt?
Thank you. I have just got news that Brookville High School has been selected as a Lynchburg Business Best Place to Work. Though many were nominated, Brookville will join a small list of 12 who stood out for having incredible culture, a hard-working team, and a ton of employee support. So congratulations to Brookville High School. Also, I think Dr. Johnson just mentioned about the supervisors approving the remodeling of Brookville High School for $40 million. I want to thank them for that. Let's see here. This week, I believe it starts Thursday and runs through Sunday, have a play, anything goes. And I'm going to tell you, the last one was, and each one that they have has been excellent. So whether you live in the Brookville area or anywhere in the county, just come by, I think you would thoroughly enjoy what these kids can do. Also, Wednesday is Administrative Professional Day. We want to thank all our hard-working professionals and everything. May 2nd through May 6th is Teacher Appreciation Week. So we want to make sure we thank all of our fine, fine teachers. And May 6th is Nurses' Day. We want to thank all our school nurses that worked so hard through the contract tracing and quarantine earlier this year. They really worked hard to keep our schools open and run smoothly. So thank you to the nurses also. That's all I have.
I attended the open house at Altavist combined school. I'd like to thank everybody for their hard work in that. I just wish we could have got some more parents out. I mean, it was a shame all the work went in and many parents didn't take advantage of it. Second, went to the ribbon cutting for the Dr. Bus, Dr. Hoden. I think he's in there somewhere. I forgot. That's pretty amazing. I was shocked how quiet and smooth the bus ride was. And Mr. Hardy, not to put you on the spot, can you advertise this a little bit for us?
Sure. So on this Thursday here at the Technical Center, we have College and Career Day, which we have had certainly appreciated. We all have over 30 local businesses plus technical schools in here for our students to meet with. Typically, it's 70, and we've done it on a division-wide basis for several years, but time constraints and rule changes that we're thankful for as of March 1st, allowing visitors and everything in there, we had a limited amount of time. So we will be doing that for our students here at the Technical Center all day on Thursday. We certainly hope that the school board can make it to see these exciting things happen. It's a job fair-style event, and usually there's multiple students that come out of this with, you know, working opportunities. On May 20th, if you want to work calendar, we will also have our CTE Signing Day. So students that are going straight from high school into employment, just like athletes signing a scholarship, we will honor them and the businesses that they're transitioning to and have a CTE Signing Day for them and their families here to raise up their decision to go right into work.
Thank you.
Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, I failed to remember one thing I wanted to, I sent you a few days ago a Department of Education notification that Campbell County, and with the work that Mr. Hardy has done, we received one of 16 state-funded CTE, which is Career and Technical Education Competitive Innovative Program Equipment Grant for high demand and fast growth industry sectors in the amount of $37,500. And it will benefit each of the four high schools, and I believe that they're for welding simulated software. Is that correct, John?
Yes, sir. So they are for some Miller virtual welders, where we will be able to introduce students without the arcs and sparks and all the consumable materials necessary. We'll be able to get 20 welders and really have them out and about in our classrooms throughout the county to introduce welding, which is one of the top in-demand jobs for Campbell County in a 10-year projection.
Very good, very good.
Hello, everyone. Thank you to all the speakers that came out tonight. I actually don't have a lot to add, if you can imagine that. I've been meeting with a lot of I've been meeting with a lot of principals, a lot of department heads, and I'm excited to say I've, I've just created some wonderful relationships with teachers from our open houses at Tomahawk, Brookville Middle, Brookville High School. I met some new teachers, even to the point where they were teary-eyed, they felt like they were at home. I asked for a lot of suggestions. I had things, a lot of great suggestions, and they were all to further improve the hive, so to speak, as we call it in B country up there, right? That I've just been very, very pleased, and I've had a lot of great outpouring of suggestions, things for improvement, and I'm working hard on them, more to come.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. So I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I know at times it looks like we go through the motions, no pun intended, but I can speak for myself, I respect and appreciate everybody coming out and speaking, particularly in regards to CRT issue. There are folks on both sides of that, and I gave it a lot of thought as to the way we voted on that tonight. And I think we're going in the right direction there overall as a county. So I want to just thank everyone for coming out, expressing their thoughts. Ms. Pennell for the petition and the information you dropped off with us tonight, and the letters that have been sent for that. So thanks for that feedback, I appreciate that, and I think I speak for the rest of the board in regards to the appreciation for the feedback we've gotten in regards to that issue. And Mr. Hardy, great news in regards to your signing, Career Day coming up and the grant that you've gotten. BWXT, my employer, will be a part of that. We're a big hiring company for both welders, machinists, inspectors, and so forth. That's great to see that we're moving forward with more innovation, more investment in that work scope. So it's a great pipeline to a great career opportunity, not only at BWXT, but a lot of other employees in, in the Campbell County and Lynchburg area. So great job, congratulations on the work moving forward there. Over at Rustburg High School, we have a choral event coming up on May the 4th and a band concert coming up on the 12th. And also, we got another, speaking of grants, Virginia College Advising Corps got a grant to have a college advisor working full-time at Rustburg High School for the next two years, funded by that grant to provide planning opportunities and a variety, for a variety of college choices for our students. So good news there. Rustburg Middle School, we did have a group of teachers tour the building last week for the first time, so they're moving forward and progressing well with that facility. They also have a band concert on the 12th and a choral event on the 17th. And then lastly, Yellow Branch, pre-K and kindergarten families, it's SOL time, in case you folks didn't know, we're ramping up for that, so they're having an event, SOL Family Night on April 26th, and also our pre-K and kindergarten families, welcome them back into the building for pre-K registration. So something that we haven't had, had an opportunity to do for a while, inviting parents back into the school buildings and interacting with teachers again as we move through the, hopefully come out the back end of this COVID pandemic issue, so. That's all I had, Dr. Miller.
Jones?
I, I too would like to thank everybody that came out, not only to speak, but listen and add your support, appreciate the involvement that you have. Nobody, nobody recognized or nobody said anything about the donations again tonight that we received. We received some significant donations from Georgia Pacific for majority of our schools, and that's, that's great stuff. I mean, it never, it looks like every month we, we're blessed with people giving from the goodness of their hearts or whatever they feel like they need to do, but we certainly appreciate it. Whitney Vernella, the principal at Concord Elementary School, she completed the Boston Marathon a week ago today. Dr. Vernella, how's she do? Is she, he's back here somewhere? He got it.
Yes, sir.
Does she?
She did well.
She told me that there was some unexpected things, but she said the support of the crowd drove her through. It was just amazing how many people are there to support you and cheer you on, so quite an impressive achievement. I want to throw a little bit of an accolade to Matt Carroll today. For some reason, my laptop over the weekend decided it wouldn't work, and I stopped by the J.J. Frey Building and, and he did his magic on it and fixed it, and I certainly appreciate that. Today, Mr. Ho, Dr. Hoden, I got some good news for you and I got a request for you. Today, I was sitting on Greenview Drive at the stoplight of Leesville Road. On the left-hand side, it was a Campbell County bus, on the right-hand side, I mean, there was a Lynchburg City bus. The Campbell County bus was shining like a new penny, no pollen, anything, and the Lynchburg bus, nowhere close. So whatever you all are doing to maintain the buses, we appreciate it. I mean, they just look, they look like they're well-maintained, we appreciate it.
I'll pass that on to Dr. Johnson.
And the second thing is, is the electric bus is, is all good and great, but I would like to have a little bit down the road, give us some cost comparison of what it costs to run them on electricity versus diesel fuel, what the upkeep on them is versus traditional, traditional diesel, and how, how long that big battery's gonna last. But just, just, just give us a little, just give us a little insight, because I mean, I think it's gonna affect us down the road. Rustburg Middle School grows more impressive every time I go by. I mean, you go by about every three days and it just gets more and more impressive, and it's just gonna really be, I talked to a little girl Sunday, she's gonna be one of the fir, the first grade that goes in it, and she's excited already just because she knows she's gonna go there. At the Central Virginia Governor's School Board meeting towards the beginning of the month, it's, it's truly, it's a meeting you kind of really want to attend because it's, that's a great deal. If I could wind the clock back, I would work hard to get in that school, because what people do there is so exciting and entertaining. They've, they have bought for the classes next year robotic arms, big ones and a bunch of little ones, and the kids are gonna program, do whatever they're gonna do. And then they've got another thing that's, I don't know, they showed a video of it, but it's like a, it's like a person laying on a table like a corpse, and you can dissect it however you want. It's not real, it's like virtual. But just the ability to see it and be able to turn it, I mean, it's just fantastic the stuff that they expose the students to, and, and the students that go there are truly blessed. And I think that's, again, thank all the administration professionals for everything they do, and just thank everybody in, in our school system for all the great stuff they've done. Days are getting long, after-school events, just appreciate everything everybody does. That's all I got.
Yeah, I just pretty much echo what's been said, appreciate Michelle and Tracy and all the other administrative assistants. We get to personally thank you too, so, yeah. I'm looking forward to meeting the State Superintendent on Wednesday and thank her for that grant that we got. And then I talked to the principal at Brookneal Elementary, and things are going good, the kids are catching up pretty well, and so there's still some, a lot of work to do. We discussed attendance, that's better now, but there is still some issues with chronic truancy that we need to look into. They're very appreciative of the central office, all the support they're getting, the specialists for reading and catching these kids up. So I think we're doing a good job to, to try to get everybody caught up. Some changes going on at Laurel School, and, and they're good changes. We're, we're looking at broadening and using that facility to do, to do more, to serve the area, and I think we'll probably have some discussion about that later when that's finalized, but, but Laurel is looking at some transition with some expansion, which will be a good thing for, for Campbell County and the region. And I think that's all I've got, so. We do have to adjourn for a closed meeting. Was there anything else? Somebody to call the?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we convene to a closed meeting for discussion or consideration of disciplinary matters or other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in scholastic record concerning students in the school division, specifically students 35 and 36 from 2021 to 2022 school year, in accordance with Section 2.2-3711, parentheses A, parentheses 2 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended.
Motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take a five-minute break. Swallowed that bitter pill.
Hopefully get out to some of the baseball and softball games and stuff here pretty soon. Haven't made it to one yet, so. Been too cold and windy for me, so. I used to have to go when my parents were playing, suffer through it.
Used to sit in the school bus to stay warm.
Can he use us to read the certification?
Absolutely.
Why are you trying to get, Toby, did you have anything you wanted to add?
You want me to?
While we wait to get this up, you can, you can tell him.
I asked for a motion, sort of...
Make a motion.
Go back into regular session.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We're back in open session, I ask for a motion certifying that to the best of each
member's knowledge that during our closed meeting, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the school board.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second, all in agreement, raise your right hand. Any opposed? That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the administration's recommendations on students number 35 and 36 as presented.
Second.
The motion is second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Now, ask for a motion for adjournment.
I got one thing.
Oh.
Our swim coach, there's money in there for that, to pay...
I gotta look at the...
No, there's, there's stipend money in it.
If it is...
And it's how they split. The question is, is it enough to get an assistant coach to...
Yeah, we're gonna look into it.
Yeah, right now, though, I mean, there's money in there, I don't think we're not funding it.
Sounds like she's growing a program, and we should support it.
Absolutely.
And, and all of her positions were excellent.
Yeah, she did an excellent job.
Yeah, yeah.
If nothing else, I'm moving adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor for adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Gavel.
Gavel.
Gavel it.
We got another meeting, what, two weeks?
Two weeks and two weeks and two weeks.
It could be two weeks and...
Two weeks and...